We'd like to reconvene to open session. And actions taken in closed session. Trustee Prendergast.
There were no actions for readout.
Okay, thank you. We will now have the invocation led by trustee Prendergast and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Rydell.
So when I was much, much younger, and some of you may remember these days, we would go through nuclear attack drills by ducking under our desks because that would protect us. And then we would, single file, go to the fallout shelter. And as a young child, I had to grasp very early on that we were living in uncertain times. And that you just didn't know what was coming. And lived with that for many, many years until the fall of the Soviet Union and what was effectively the end of the Cold War. We didn't have to worry about that anymore. And after recent events, it brings to mind that we're kind of coming back to some uncertain times. And I think now we know that ducking under the desk wouldn't help us, but we do know that there are real ramifications and implications. And I ask, not for a moment of silence, maybe some reflection, but really, when we live in uncertain times, take that extra step to hug your loved ones a little more than you might, call someone you haven't talked to in a while, and just bring back the joy we have in life and hope that calmer heads prevail. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all. Okay, it is now time for public comments. And I believe we have a motion. Trustee. Okay, we usually, for one topic, the time limit is 20 minutes. We have 16 people, which would be 32 minutes. So we are thinking of just saying that that would be okay. That will work because there is a two-minute time limit for each person. And so we will ask you to stop if you are going past the two minutes. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
But you don't have to speak two minutes. You can.
Right, right. That's just the maximum.
So you're looking for a motion to extend the 20 to 32 max?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Bartlet that we move the maximum time to 32 minutes. Can you do a voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, roll call, sorry.
Trustee Bartlet?
Yes.
Trustee Dak?
Yes.
Trustee Prendergast?
Yes.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Rydell?
Yes.
Trustee Mel Chigurh?
Aye.
Trustee Emin?
Yes. Okay, the motion to extend to 32 minutes for the one topic has passed. Before we start that time, however, we have someone on a different topic. So I'd call on Christian Swazo.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Christian Swazo, a summer student at Salabac College. And I'm standing here to express my gratitude for the Exploring China trip that took place from June 8th to the 13th. I was honored to serve as a student leader and guide my peers across Tangshan, China, allowing them to experience the rich, intangible cultural history that China has to offer. The students, the student corps had an exceptional time witnessing the Great Wall, practicing Chinese calligraphy, and learning about Tangshan's unique and resilient history in museums and cultural sites. In collaboration with ESL professor Julie McGur, we discussed the unique pathway that community college students take to higher education and Salabac's remarkable ability to send students to top universities across the nation. This is a valuable program that Salabac has established. I hope that the board will continue to fund these trips in the future. I firmly believe that when students have the opportunity to travel, they become better individuals by being exposed to diverse perspectives across the world. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. And before we start on the one topic, there's one more thing I need to say. Please be advised that board members are not permitted to respond directly to public comments during the meeting. However, the board may consider your feedback and may address concerns through future actions or discussions as appropriate. Thank you. Okay, number one, Howard Hart.
Good evening. I'm council member Howard Hart of San Juan Capistrano. This college and district have played a profound role in my life. My father was the assistant superintendent of the district and founding president of IVC. Both my wife Laura and I attended school and participated in athletics here. We are part of this community, and we know that you are part of the larger South Orange County community. That is why I stand before you tonight. Weeks after my fellow council members and I rejected NG's bid to rezone part of the Saddleback Church property for battery energy storage facility, in November of 2022, NG applied directly to the California Energy Commission for a permit. As part of the permitting process, NG is required to enter into a public benefits agreement with a local nonprofit organization. Before finding Saddleback College, several other reputable local nonprofits refused their offer. Make no mistake, acceptance of the NG grant has allowed them to check the PBA box on their application. Our city manager met personally with Dr. Stern on April 14th and warned him that this would be the case. Dr. Stern failed to heed this warning, then failed to adequately disclose the ramifications to you when you voted to accept this grant at your last meeting. This is not a NIMBY issue. San Juan Capistrano is open to hosting a facility elsewhere in the city. For a multitude of reasons I am prepared to discuss in detail, this is simply the wrong location. The project is opposed by OCTA, the Orange County Firefighters Association, CUSD, J. Sarah High School, and the City of Laguna Niguel, among others. Just about every local official from both parties has written or spoken against this proposal. I beg of you to correct this egregious error and, in doing so, once again highlight that the South Orange County Community College District remains committed to the welfare of the South Orange County community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Mehta.
Good evening. My comment is for Ms. Bartlet. Ms. Bartlet, it's public information that Jeff Corliss ran your campaign for several county supervisor roles as well as your current position. And Mr. Corliss also runs marketing for Compass Energy/NG, who is the current applicant for the San Juan Capistrano Battery Farm Project, which offered the grant to South Orange County Community College Districts. Optically, this relationship between yourself and Mr. Corliss, who is leading the marketing for NG, appears to be a conflict of interest to the community. We are highly concerned why you do not recuse yourself from voting on accepting this grant. Ms. Bartlet, your involvement in voting on this grant appears to be a quid pro quo to benefit your relationship with Mr. Corliss, who serves the applicant. Furthermore, in supporting this grant, you've effectively participated in allowing the applicant to claim they've met their community benefit requirement, thus moving NG's application from incomplete to complete status, allowing the project to move forward. If SOCCCD is in agreement with the president's statement that they did not agree to a community benefit, we urge the college to release a public statement that you are not in support of this project, that you did not accept a community benefit, and that this grant was accepted under false advertising by NG. As the community, we would like for you to prove that you are unbiased to this grant process. Thank you.
Could the next four people please come up to save time? It would be Teresa Ford, Danya Burns, Michael McGrady, and Amy David. And so the next speaker is Teresa Ford.
My name is Teresa Ford. I'm a resident of Laguna Niguel and an engaged member of South Orange County community. I'm here tonight to speak about a clear lapse in compliance with California's Public Records Act, CPRA. On June 4th, I submitted a written request to President Stern and the Board of Trustees seeking all communication between SOCCCD officials, Saddleback College, and related parties regarding the Compass project and associated community benefits package. After receiving no acknowledgement within the 10-day statutory window, I followed up on June 20th noting this lack of response, violation of the CPRA. Only this afternoon, after citing noncompliance, I received a response from the district's Public Affairs Office stating that my request had not been made through the proper channel. She then provided me a new email. It raises the question, is it simply a matter of procedural issue? Why did it take two weeks, two messages, and no internal forwarding to surface? This gives the appearance of delay tactic, intentional or not, which undermines public confidence. Let me be clear, I contacted the chancellor, the board, the president of Saddleback College directly. Not one of them responded, nor did they forward my request to the proper contact until today. The breakdown in communication is not a matter of misrouting, it's a matter of accountability. On June 3rd, President Stern told a small group of residents that all references to a community benefits agreement had been removed. Understanding who participated in that decision and what changes were made in the agreement is central to public transparency.
Thank you.
I have some documents.
Danya.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dani, and I am a resident and homeowner in Laguna Niguel, but I am better known for my social media platform, WFF News, where I have a following of over 600,000 people and over 350 million views in the last two years. I am here, and was not planning on speaking tonight, to let all of you guys know that I'm very concerned about the location of this lithium battery storage facility and the fact that our residents voted against this location, and you guys accepted a grant to get public community engagement in order for NG to do a loophole and get this passed through. That's very concerning, especially when it's been brought to my attention that Lisa Bartlett has direct connections to Jeff Corliss, NG, the lithium battery storage company's marketing company, that that was also her campaign strategist. I want it to be known and noted by everybody here that I will be using my platform to make sure that everybody knows what is going on here. We are tired as residents and people in the world with everything going on of people putting profit before people. NG has other locations that they can use for this lithium battery storage facility that does not put our residents in harm's way, and they are choosing not to use those locations because it would cost them more money. That is wrong, and it is important that this group of people decides to reevaluate the grant agreement and their support for NG because it is putting our residents in harm's way. It is not a matter of if there will be fires in that area and in that location, it is a matter of when. And after what we've seen with the fires in the Palisades, the Eaton fires, and all of these other situations with the lithium battery storage facilities catching fire, which you cannot put out with water, you just have to let it burn, it is a serious concern for these residents, especially with insurance contracts being canceled in California and everything else.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michael McGrady.
My name is Michael McGrady. I live on Hidden Creek Drive in San Juan Capistrano, HOA president of my community. My opposition to the Compass project spans over two years, and I live at ground zero. Initially, my voice was small. I met with NG, the city, Saddleback Church, to discuss my community's fears, our business owners, our schoolchildren, the Dominican convent sisters of J. Sarah Catholic High School. I truly felt alone representing my community. But the community opposed to this location grew exponentially. Local residents formed coalitions, opposition from J. Sarah High School, Unido South OC, Boys and Girls Clubs, Sacred Places Institute, Shea Therapeutic Writing Center, Capistrano Unified School District, Orange County Professional Firefighters, the Hunanio Band of Mission Indians, the chorus was deafening. This community expanded with bipartisan opposition across the political spectrum. Unanimous opposition from San Juan Capistrano, Laguna Niguel, Orange County Supervisor, State Assembly, even Congressman Mike Levin, a green energy proponent, opposes this location. This is a community of hundreds of families and institutions standing together, not against green energy, but against this utterly inappropriate location. Yet, I suppose the Board of SOCCCD had another community in mind. Your community must have also included La Defense outside of Paris, France. You appear to endorse the wanton financial interests of a $90 billion a year company operating on five continents and over 30 countries. It seems everyone involved has a major financial stake, NG, Venture Strategic, and now SOCCCD. With complete disregard for the outspoken bipartisan multi-agency multicultural opposition, and opposition that grew from lonely voices to a symphony of alarm, without hesitation, you unanimously cosigned this threat to my neighbors and to my family.
Thank you. Amy David.
My name is Amy David. I'm a resident of Laguna Niguel, and my family lives within the two-mile radius for emergency evacuation for this construction site in San Juan Capistrano. I watched the YouTube video for your recent April trustee board meeting, and I'm astonished as to the lack of time that everyone took in approving a grant without asking any viable questions other than trustee Jamal wanted to know how the money was going to be dispersed. I believe no one did their due diligence to investigate, ask questions, inquire. Throughout, all the language in this grant is crystal clear that it's a lithium battery storage facility in San Juan Capistrano. Furthermore, as a result, the signing and receiving of this grant, which you have heard, has now allowed NG to check that needed box. Even though President Stern recently stated that this is a simple grant and not a community engagement agreement, NG is promoting it as such on the internet, under compassenergystorage.com. Please do your homework with a petition for everyone and using the words of "7-0 voted for this." So the question is, if this is not a community engagement benefit or agreement, I would like all of you to consider submitting a letter contesting this grant wording for that intention and for it to be sent directly to the CEC that NG is misrepresenting your grant agreement and to post the letter to the docket for the community to see. I have a copy of the petition to give to you. Lastly, I can assure you, this will be a reelection issue moving forward for all trustees on the board. You have let our community down. You failed to do due diligence and maintain the high ethics and standard practices that you all must adhere to, to BP 2715. And isn't the invocation ironic? I had wished the same reflection was done on this grant.
Thank you. Can we have the next, excuse me, four people come forward, please? Carl David, Ann and Mike Kramer, Andre Lubarsky, and Anne Mudry.
Hi, I'm Carl David, the 30-year resident of Laguna Niguel, retired Army officer who handled crisis management situations while I was in the Army. I want to speak against the position you take on the grant you accepted from NG for the Compass Battery Facility in San Juan. My family lives, as you mentioned, as she mentioned already, within that two-mile radius, and we're one of the 37,000 evacuees that would have to leave our house if the fire occurred. Oh, yes, the campus is also in that zone, and many others in Mission Viejo. It's not if, but when a crisis will occur, not like a regular fire with the batteries, but an unplanned wildfire that could result in associated toxic smoke event. My concern is this could happen accidentally or due to an international or domestic terrorist attack that will have disastrous effects because it is a susceptible soft target on the close proximity of freeways and many avenues of approach and egress, which is a military term. This college and the board, even though many of you do not live in the danger zone, you will have no other option but to deal with the catastrophic effects that our Laguna Niguel and San Juan Capistrano communities will endure. Your decision to quote "not take a position, but rather just take money" in fact is a decision to allow the disaster to come to neighborhood homes. As a military strategic planner, I've lived and taught consequence management of weapons of mass destruction, but there are always effects on innocent civilians. They must be considered. In this situation, NG is the inviter, and you are the enabler. And hope is their method that we can deal with the disaster mitigation. As President Stern recently told me and their group, you have taken a non-position but just want to provide education for students. Well, I've been in higher education for the last 15 years and would never support workforce development options over the lives and well-being of the community and campus we serve. Public safety is a seminal reason we and all the locally elected officials oppose this location. We ask you change your neutral position and support all of our thousands of letters and comments and requests California Energy Commission deny the approval.
Ann and Mike Kramer, please.
We're San Juan Capistrano residents. We would be less than a mile from this project. Saddleback Capistrano Church sold out the residence of San Juan Capistrano and Laguna Niguel by selling 13 acres of their property that had been given to them through the philanthropic gesture of David Green, founder of Hobby Lobby, to NG North America for a best lithium battery storage facility. Many residents are extremely concerned and alarmed about the track record of these lithium battery storage facilities. After the sale of 13 acres, it came to light what the plans were for the property, and city leaders voted against this facility. Then, the state government enacted a law taking this decision away from city leaders, and the approval process forged on to the state level. We have been doing our best to fight this, but once again, our local SOCCCD Board of Trustees has sold out the residence of San Juan Capistrano and Laguna Niguel by accepting a $750,000 grant from NG, which satisfies one of their requirements. I know it is very tempting to have that money for the workforce program, but this will be considered dirty money. Please change your course now and not accept this grant and be good stewards for the residents. Saddleback Church said that they were unaware what NG was planning on doing with the property when they sold it and had regrets later. It was too late. You still have a chance to make this right.
My name is Mike Kramer. I'm new to this community. I've only lived here four years. Thanks for letting me speak. I've come to find out that even though people here have voted for their city council, mayor, et cetera, they virtually have no say-so on what is going on here in this community. And I would appreciate it if you all would vote no on this grant, just to show that they don't want it in their hometown. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Lubarsky.
Good evening. My name is Andre Lubarsky. I'm a California native and a 37-year Laguna Niguel resident. When I first learned about this proposed Compass NG Lithium Battery Storage Project, I thought, hmm, California is proposing another enhancement that's going to benefit our community. But then I quickly learned, when I looked into this, the scope of the project, and I realized the many safety, fire, environmental, transportation, and cultural concerns that this location is the wrong location for a best facility. After stepping back and looking at the close proximity to an extreme fire danger area, to homes, to schools, to businesses, environmentally sensitive areas, transportation corridors, and then when I listened to the politicians and the organization opposing these projects, local municipalities, native organizations, fire departments, and the tens of thousands of concerned citizens whose safety and livelihoods are at stake, it just shocks me that those in power to approve this project are still considering moving forward. Stepping back even further, I realized that it's California's incessant need to electrify the state as soon as possible that's driving this dangerous project. But what's more obvious is that money is driving the selection of this totally inappropriate location without consideration of safer alternatives. Money is a powerful driver, and it's obvious that money is paying and playing a major role in the project's approval process. Who in their right mind would approve such a dangerous project at such an inappropriate site unless large sums of money are being granted to those who can be influenced by those who will benefit? I hope the board will take a step back and review the significance of accepting the grant from NG. That decision can potentially devastate the cities of San Juan, Laguna Niguel, Dana Point, and Mission Viejo. Thank you.
Anne Mudry?
Yes. Can everybody see my sign? Okay. My name is Anne Mudry. I have been a resident for 42 years of Laguna Niguel and a former student of Saddleback College for five years. Slow burner. I do know Dr. Elliot Stern. I've seen him at the galas. I wish there was a senior rate, though. And I know the honorable Lisa Bartlett. Hi, used to see you in Dana Point. And Marcia, I've seen you at the different programs. It's not when this site will blow up, it's when. Anywhere from zero months to three years, it will catch on fire. That is a fact. It's 1,500 feet from the Laguna Niguel home. My home is two-mile radius, so I'm right there. I've worked all my life, maybe one, sometimes two, jobs to get that house paid off. And now this. It will affect Saddleback College, Mission Viejo, Providence Hospital, and of course, 200 children's schools. These are the children of a future of America. Please do the right thing. Take it out to the dump where there's the grid. Nobody's around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My extra seconds can go to anybody else. Thank you. The following people come forward, please. Regina Powers, Bruce Powers, Chris Lobo, and Linda Cardwell.
Hi, my name is Regina Powers, and we've lived in Laguna Niguel for four years within one-mile radius of the lithium battery plant that's potentially going to be placed right here. I know all about the fire danger and everything that's been said, but I was thinking today about our fire insurance was canceled this year and due to the location of our house being in a fire danger area. And I was just thinking, what's the logic behind placing a lithium battery plant in this area where we can't even get fire insurance? And the lithium battery plant itself is a fire danger? And it just doesn't make any sense. Now, I'm not a business person. I don't know how the business works, but I wonder how a lithium battery plant can get fire insurance. fire insurance. But I guess there must, it doesn't make sense to me. But I know that the grant money is important to colleges. I've been educator for, for 35 years. I, I understand that, but please look at what the grants are going to be for and please try to make this change and correct it. Thank you.
Hi, that's my wife. I'm Bruce Powers. We live in Hidden Crest Way. This, I have a little personal thing here. For 14 years, I worked for Union Oil. I ran a catalyst. I burnt hydrogen sulfide gas. I've sent the sulfur to the Unit 120 plant. I, and, and the, the sulfur dropped off at the bottom and we sent it to the sulfuric acid plant. The thing is, we had every four years, we had to burn the sulfur off these catalysts where it was the size of batteries, you know, just like the lithium-powered batteries are. And there's a thing is, it gets up to a certain temperature when you're burning it off, it all of a sudden just takes off. So they called in all the unit operators, me being one of them. We stormed to try to get a figure out to do, what to do. We had a 20,000 gallons of liquid nitrogen. And I go, we'll put that, that is as cold as cold as can be. Let's put that in there. And they, and all the other operators said, yeah, let's do that. It was on the high for five days with 20,000 gallons of liquid nitrogen. You don't even have a slight idea of how dangerous this stuff is. I'm just trying to make that point. You guys live here. The winds blow across Saddleback. They go to San Juan Capistrano. They go to Laguna Niguel. They go to my house. And, and if they burn, burn at the right, they're in separate little boxes. If one burns and then all, at the very end of it for five days, it happens to light up one of the others, that's going to go for five days. And then another five days and maybe 20, 20 days and maybe they finally burns itself out. I'm just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Lobo.
Good evening. My name's Chris Lobo. I'm a ninth-generation Wanya N'Banda Mission Indians. My family goes back to 1718 in this area. I represent 1941 members. I'm the Director of the Government Affairs for the tribe under Nathan Banda. Board, you've made a horrible mistake. You have an opportunity to fix it. It lies squarely on each of you. The people out here, the people of the tribe, know that things were mishandled, know that you were not given full information to make a clear decision. There's people out there representing you saying that you do, you are neutral in this case. You cannot receive money and stay neutral. That's impossible. I don't think any of you have walked the land in which this, this project's going to go on. It's the mother village site of our tribe. It's a creation story of our tribe. I would urge all of you to go and walk that land to understand what it means. I don't think you do. The 1941 members of our tribe trace their lineage back to village and pre-first sustained contact. If you read a little bit about this site, you'll understand the impact that this battery site will have. It's not if, it's when. Every site that has burned, they all told you the same thing, 1%. Don't worry about it until it happens. The most historic place in this state is San Juan Capistrano. The oldest street in this state is Los Rio Street. The oldest house in San Juan Capistrano is the Rios Adobe from 19, or 1794.
Thank you.
Thank you. Change of spell.
Linda Cardwell.
Good evening. My name is Linda Cardwell. I'm a 35-year resident of Laguna Niguel, also a community educator, worked for 24 years in the Capistrano Unified School District. You all have been elected by our communities to be good stewards of this institution and also of the community. And we come here as very concerned community members to ask you to please oppose this lithium battery storage site. I ask you to go and visit the site, as your last speaker said, and see exactly where that is. There are so many homes and schools, including your own, that are within the evacuation zone for that site. Imagine if on a Wednesday midday, an emergency happens at that site and you have to evacuate all your students and staff. Think about the traffic on Avery Parkway, on Crown Valley Parkway. Any of your students and staff that need to go south, the freeway will be completely shut down. This is a catastrophe waiting to happen, and I ask you to seriously consider whether to accept this grant. And I just implore you to publicly oppose the building of this battery storage facility on the site within two miles of this university. Thank you.
Could we have the next three people, please? Peter Dorsh, Linda, Lindy Tannenbaum, and Pamela Metta.
Good evening, President Inman and members of the board. My name is Peter Dorsh, and I represent NG North America, the proponent of the Compass Energy Storage Project. First, we're thrilled about the opportunity to support local students through a $750,000 grant for education and job training. Importantly, the agreement to receive the grant does not prejudge the project or its safety features. The grant takes effect if and only if the project is deemed to meet all safety, fire, and environmental standards, which are reviewed through a full EIR under CEQA. There are over 3,400 utility or commercial-sized battery storage facilities operating safely in California every day, next to homes, schools, hospitals, freeways, and other infrastructure, and with shorter setbacks than the proposed Compass Project. According to federal safety data, the incident rate for battery storage facilities is substantially lower than planes, trains, automobiles, or the agricultural sector. And while exceedingly rare, no battery storage thermal incident has ever caused a wildfire or structure fire off the premises of the site. In recognition of the safety and significant benefits of such projects, the South Orange County Community College District is itself planning the development of battery energy storage facilities on each of your campuses. And we commend your forward-thinking leadership for doing so. We have also heard the concerns raised by local residents and are committed to addressing those issues directly throughout this process. Safety is the number one priority for this project and will never be compromised. Thank you, and we look forward to supporting the district and the South Orange County college students should the project be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. We need to go on, please.
Lindy Tannenbaum.
Hello, I'm Lindy Tannenbaum. I'm a Laguna Niguel resident and I'm a faculty member at IVC. When I left my prior career, which was in business, I did so to join IVC and the South Orange County Community College District. I was drawn to your organization because of the student-first and the student-equity focus that we have. We all share the same goal, to make the lives better for our students, and I commend all of us in this room for doing that. Through the pandemic, I saw so many great things that this board and the leadership of IVC and Saddleback set up for our students. Times have changed. Not that students are no longer important, because they certainly are, but we need to change our focus beyond just our students. We need to focus on our community. Our community includes former students, current students, and future students. The number of future students you're going to have is going to decrease, certainly by one, because I will not be sending my son to Saddleback as I originally planned because of this decision. Your community does not want this facility in the location it's proposed. Your community does not trust NG and the things that they are saying to you. Your community does not feel safe with this battery facility where it is planned. Your community will show you that by not sending their students to our schools. Your community will backlash against you. You will see that on Facebook and other social media, as we already have, and we will continue to see that in the future. Please rethink the focus, the vision of our schools. Broaden our narrow mindset from student-based to community-based.
Pamela Metta.
Hi, my name is Pamela Metta. I am a nurse for 39 years now, taking care of critically ill patients, pregnant women that are critically ill. That doesn't have a lot to do with what we're talking about right now, but I did want to thank you and Saddleback College because I have worked with some wonderful nursing students. You put out some genuinely well-equipped nursing students from your college, and I appreciate that. I train them, they come and work with me. So it troubles me that their future may hold for them caring for the patients that will be on the receiving end of an unfortunate event within one of these battery storage facilities. I speak on behalf of first responders and nurses who will be dealing with this. This is not pleasant for me to think about. And the conflict of interest, Lisa Bartlett, and, and I just clarified with the NG representative, who I thought I heard correctly, but I wanted to clarify, you are planning battery storage facilities on your campuses? So I would like to know if, Lisa, have you received money from them again for this? And have you influenced the board? I know you can't respond to me, but it is a question, and I'm very troubled over this. Board members, please, you are representatives. Your ethics and your ethical positions are being called into question. Yeah, it's great to take money, but for the right reasons and from the right people, not in this situation. This is extremely disturbing. You are all going to be held shameful and accountable when a problem happens. This is not good. This is not the, this is not how you want to represent who you are to the students that you teach and educate. Are we going to educate them to turn the cheek and take the money and do the wrong thing?
Thank you.
Stand up, do the right thing, give the money back. Don't put these on your campuses.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The next thing is board reports, and I remind our board members that we also have two minutes. So can we start with Trustee Melchiker?
Thank you all for commenting to our board. IVC's commencement was truly outstanding. It was my 40th that I've attended. I thank IVC staff for organizing such a joyful and meaningful celebration. Over 3,000 degrees were conferred to IVC students, and I had the honor of shaking hands with every single graduate, and I'm so proud of how our colleges transform lives. I actually cherish the rhythm of the academic year. I attended many of the end-of-the-year celebrations, and I'm impressed at how often our students, even fellow Rover advisors, return as teachers here. In the Legislative Subcommittee, we reviewed bills, including one affecting student housing. We now provide housing vouchers for students with housing insecurities. We are deeply concerned with the current bill that mandates us to force our students to sleep in their cars. These mandated excessive costs would eliminate our housing vouchers and other key support programs. The CSUs were exempted. Our community college students are just as valuable and deserve the same considerations as other students. At yesterday's Mars Rover Team meeting, we began designing our next rover. We meet several times a week and compete annually in Utah. I've served as 100% volunteer science advisor for three years, as do the other advisors of the Mars Rover Team. This year, 144 teams from 15 countries competed, 38 were named finalists. We were once again the only two-year college to make the finals. That's an incredible feat. Saddleback Robotics finished 17th, outperforming 31 finalists and 97 total teams, coming out ahead of universities from Japan, UC San Diego, Texas A&amp;M, Georgia Tech, and Cornell. Our science team lead, Christina Von Hoof, is transferring to UC Berkeley in physics. That's an extraordinary achievement. She hopes to return to us as a future science advisor. I'm welcoming that. Bridget Pronto was named as the new science lead yesterday at the meeting. Bridget edited this year's fabulous video. She mentioned, and all the students mentioned, we need students from graphic design and other disciplines to join the rover team, so can some of you help us recruit these students? Thanks.
Trustee Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam President. So since our last meeting, I've had the pleasure of attending on June 19th, the Legislative Subcommittee meeting, and I also really enjoyed attending the commencement ceremony as well. We've all been reading about the commencement class of 2025 from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, and it's really heartwarming to hear the many stories from students who are excited to take the next step in their lives, embarking on a new career or continuing their education at a four-year institution. The consistent theme in their comments is about how their lives have been enriched and changed forever through their time in our community college district. So thank you to all of the faculty, professors, administration, and professional staff, along with our presidents, vice chancellors, and chancellor, for caring and ensuring that each student has the opportunity to become the best version of themselves and is now prepared to take that important and monumental next step in their lives. With the upcoming Fourth of July weekend, we'll all enjoy certainly the long holiday weekend, but let's also remember the meaning of July 4th. It was the day in 1776 that the Declaration of Independence was adopted by the Second Continental Congress in Philadelphia, and our original 13 colonies were no longer subject to the monarch of Britain. Freedom is revered, and we love to celebrate with barbecues, festivals, and of course, the fireworks shows in the evening. Enjoy spending time with family, friends, and loved ones. Thank you.
Trustee Jack.
All right, pretty quiet this summer outside of my inbox, but I was happy to see IVC had a well-staffed table at the City of Irvine's Juneteenth event this last Saturday. I was there staffing the council member I work for, but I was happy to see that this event was put on and that there was a lot of activity and engagement with our IVC table and a number of community members that were present, including California Attorney General Rob Bonta, who was there and spoke. But that is it for me, so I will move on to the next trustee.
Okay. Trustee Prandirghast.
Yeah, do I get four minutes since I didn't do last month's? No. It's okay. I only, just wanted to also reiterate the commencement. It's always nice to go to those. When I get to go to the IVC one, it involves early college students, which, like Trustee Melchiker, I did shake everyone's hand, but when I shook the early college students' hands that go to the school I teach at, that moment of recognition is like, wait, what are you doing here? It's always fun. And then I get to award them another certificate of graduation a week later at their high school graduation. So it's a tremendous feat, and it's a great program that we love to support. And it was also nice to shake the hand of the 10-year-old girl who broke the record of her older siblings, who graduated 11 and then 12, and now she's at 10, and it's just phenomenal. I don't know what I was doing at 10, but I wasn't graduating from college. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
Yeah, just a couple, a few things. I thought it was awesome to see the turnout tonight. I think it reminded us, on the precipice of July 4th, what it means to be free and to be able to address your government in a fair and, I think, transparent manner. And so I thought it was awesome. I was really happy to see the turnout tonight and very happy to hear from the community on this. I just returned from my homeland of Armenia, nascent democracy itself and whose people are desiring freedom, though unfortunately surrounded by autocratic dictatorships, who are literally trying who are literally trying to kill them. So, it's nice to... It was nice to see them continuing on their path of freedom and to be part of that effort and other work that I do. On Saturday, I was very pleased to be here on this great campus of Saddleback College for Pride Day. And I was... It was an amazing turnout. And I saw Dr. Stern and others from Saddleback College and the community were there. If you didn't get a chance to come and see it, please try to do so. Hopefully, we host it again. I know prior, previously, I'd been hosted by the City of Mission Viejo, and it was really nice. I had an opportunity to speak to Mission Viejo Mayor Bob Roush. Came to the event, had a nice conversation with him and with Laguna Nigal Councilmember Stephanie Odo. She was there. And Cynthia Vasquez. How could I forget? I think she was one of the organizers of the event from the Mission Viejo City Council. So, well done. Lots of love, lots of energy, lots of positive vibes. So, hopefully, we can continue doing it. Thank you.
Trustee Rydell?
Yes, I was able to attend the Second Annual English Language Learner Healthcare Pathways Regional Celebration on Thursday, June 12th. I have to tell you that there was extra excitement in that McKinney Theater for the healthcare graduates that graduated that day. It was very special. Now, I didn't know this, but I'm going to share something with you. Today is Love Your Son Day. May mine always remember that he is brilliant, loving, considerate, handsome, brave, blessed, respected, and that I love him beyond measure. Well, six weeks ago, actually, it was the day of our last board meeting, I almost lost my son. And for three days, I didn't know if I would keep him or not. It has been five weeks with us together in the hospital, from here in Orange County up to Cedar Sinai. And I share this with you because I believe in the power of prayer. For the few people that knew about this, I just have to say that they can really pray. Because sepsis is a horrible disease. It's a multi-system organ, which he lost two organs. And then I thought, how can this all happen? And Cedars, please give us transplants. As it turned out, I want to tell you the prayer has been heard and that I believe that he will only probably need kidneys. But at any rate, I say this to you tonight because I have a group and I have a few people out there. And with that group, I ask you to be a prayer wearer and please help and remember my son, Michael, in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to quote Rebecca Beck, our IVC Academic Senate President, who stated, "There are moments in our work in community college that catch you quietly and stir something deep." I felt the same way as Trustee Rydell did at the English Language Learner Healthcare Pathways Celebration. I went there to learn about one of our programs. I like to know what they're all doing and what they're about. I had no idea I would be moved emotionally so much. These students completed a difficult healthcare program while learning English at the same time. I loved the way Dr. Hernandez said, "Just-in-time English." So, it was a... It's a marvelous idea, and we are so proud of all these students. Another proud event was the Saddleback College commencement, and I really loved shaking hands and sharing that very special moment with so many of the graduates. I finished the month with the meeting of the Irvine Valley College Foundation. As the fiscal year ends, we have raised $1.15 million and reached the goal of establishing more than 100 endowments. On behalf of the students, thank you to Alyssa Oransky, her team, and members of the board for their excellent work. As this transition, I always think of the old saying, "Make new friends and keep the old. One is silver and the other's gold." I think that was from camp. Welcome to our new leaders, Noah, Maba, Zarida, and Georgina, for your dedication and your willingness to step forward. And farewell to the very special Ace Kagiwa. I met you when I first... Was that close?
Yeah, that was good.
Oh, okay, okay. When I first interviewed Dr. Hernandez for a local newspaper, the first thing I noticed was your smile. And since then, I have observed that friendly attitude along with a very professional approach to your job. And thank you for doing this one. That's all for now. Thank you. And now, we have our student trustee.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for everyone showing up tonight. Since our last meeting, it was Memorial Day. And I also know through... We're having some trying times as a nation and a community recently. So, I would just like to piggyback off something that trustee Jamal said. I am also a combat veteran from the United States Marine Corps, and it is really awesome to see a community come together and be able to voice any opinions or grievances, whether it's good or bad, with everyone around them. Just because it goes to show that there are some places all around the world that would do anything to live where we are. So, it's just one of those times where we can sit back and be grateful to be an American. Outside of that, in the Veterans Club at Saddleback, we just had 18 recent graduates that are going on to further their education. And that's 18 veterans that are maximizing benefits and going on to better society. And I'm very blessed and proud to be where I'm at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we will now have our leaders. If we could just start at this end with the Faculty Association and go down the row.
It's been a while since I've been here, so I know how to use the mic, which is a plus. So, first, I just wanted to thank the board, the college presidents, and the faculty managers and staff involved in the hiring of our six new full-time faculty members to our district that are listed on the agenda tonight. I'm personally very excited because two of the names will be joining my department, English at IVC. Having been on their hiring committee, I know they will be wonderful assets to our district and our students. We also wanted to acknowledge the career and the work of one of our retirees, Simon Davis, who was an IVC kinesiology professor for a little bit over 20 years, one of our soccer coaches, and also a member of our Academic Senate for many, many years. And I reached out to one of his colleagues, who described him as a great faculty advocate who was always supportive of academic programs and reached across disciplines to form relationships with different departments. So, he will be missed, and we wish him well. We continue to look for ways to support our faculty who have been impacted by the changes to the prescription drug plan. And then finally, with regards to the strategic plan, the district plan is on the agenda for tonight, and I know the colleges recently held their strategic planning meetings. As a Faculty Association, we sincerely appreciate the opportunity for collaboration across constituencies and the opportunity to share faculty and teaching perspectives in the development of our strategic plans. So, thank you to our college and our district leadership for helping make that possible. We do our best work when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Gonzalez, Saddleback College Academic Senate, no report.
Okay. Rebecca Beck? Wait, no. You know me. Never mind. I wanted to take a moment tonight to acknowledge something that we're going all, going through, and that is the difficult transition to Banner. Banner is our new system. I'm sure all of you have heard of that. And moving to a new system on this scale has not been easy, and we're all feeling that impact. It's been messy, and yet our faculty have shown up, adapted, and we've kept moving forward. In the midst of it all, our department chairs have been doing tremendous work. They've been fielding questions, guiding their departments, and keeping faculty informed and steady. Their leadership is deeply appreciated. I also want to make sure that our administrative assistants get a huge, huge thank you. They have been essential. They have taken on a huge share of the day-to-day weight, helping faculty navigate new processes, fixing errors, and holding things together while the system catches up. We're very grateful for their clarity, their stamina, and their patience. Thank you also to Vice Chancellor Chris, to his team, Sandy Pope, Jeff, and Gurley. They have been working nonstop behind the scenes. Their efforts may not always be visible to all of us, but I know that they're helping and holding the infrastructure in place, and we see the difference that they're making. So, in sum, I just wanted to say that, yes, faculty are adjusting. It's been tough, but we adapt, and we improvise, and we do what we always do, which is to find ways to keep our students at the center. So, change at this scale is never easy. We know that, and we know we're not alone in it, and we'll figure it out together, one sip at a time. And that's what makes all the difference. Thank you.
Irvine Valley College Classified Senate? Zarida?
No, Zarida, it's going to be Ace for tonight. It's my last one. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is my final Board of Trustees meeting as Classified Senate President for Irvine Valley College. I want to take a moment to reflect and say thank you. I want to express my deepest gratitude to the board, Chancellor Barnes, President Hernandez, and Vice Presidents McDonald, Miranda, and Kachatrian, along with my faculty colleagues, especially Rebecca Beck and Summer Surplus. It has truly been a privilege and honor to work alongside you all. I also want to thank the mentors who have guided and encouraged me along the way, Karen Jimenez, Angela Mahaney, Desiree Ortiz, Alyssa Oransky, DJ Santiago, and Frank Rivera. Thank you for always providing me a different perspective, keeping me grounded and being an ear to all my concerns and ideas. And of course, to Melanie Butner and Diane Oaks, my amazing bosses. Thank you for your flexibility, trust, and support in allowing me to serve in this dual role while also continuing my work as the new media marketing specialist. Looking back, I'm very proud of what we, as a senate, have built together. These past two years, we launched a classified new hire orientation to welcome new professionals into the IVC community. We created the Lunch and Learn Series to provide meaningful professional development opportunities for staff. We hosted the Regional Senate Gathering, bringing together colleagues from across Southern California to share ideas and build connections. We continued district-wide collaborations through my role as co-chair alongside Erlin Ballo for Classified Day, helping bring together professionals across the colleges and the district. We fostered campus community through events like the Halloween Door Decorating Contest and the annual Thanksgiving Turkey Drive. And we never stopped putting students first, raising scholarship funds and awarding student scholarships over the last two years. As I close out my term, I'm proud to introduce the new Classified Senate Executive Board. Zarida Quiros will be our new president. Brianna Bell will be our president-elect. Sylvia Torres Mendoza will be our VP of Equity. Anthony Erko Lamenta will be our treasurer. Lisa Liao as clerk, and Coral Barrera as our communications officer. They are a passionate, dedicated group, and I'm excited to see how they will continue this important work. Unfortunately, I cannot stay for the rest of tonight's board meeting as I have an early flight tomorrow for the CLI conference in Sacramento. But it's been a very joy to serve, and I leave this role with a full heart. Thank you again for the opportunity to lead and for everything you all do to support and celebrate our classified professionals at IVC and district-wide. It has truly been an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have the Saddleback College Classified Senate?
Ditto. No, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve this year. It's been wonderful. I did want to highlight those who are stepping into new leadership roles next year. Georgina Martinez is our president incoming for Classified Senate at Saddleback. She is also at CLI. Our VP will be Riley Phelps. Our... We have an opening, very wonderfully opening, for our VP of Equity Inclusion as Casey Cooper has taken on an interim role at ATEP as our operations manager for that area. So, we will be filling that role. Chantel Gill will be our secretary. I'll be president-elect. We have a couple new folks that are going to be joining us as members at large. That will be Emma Lenny and Fiona... Sorry, Fiona Rushi. So, I'm really excited to work with this new incoming team and ready to continue the work of professional development commitment to student success and uplifting our colleagues. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Desiree Ortiz, please.
Thank you. First, I want to... That was loud. I want to thank my two colleagues here for leading alongside me and letting me learn from you and share joy with you. So, I look forward to leading with Zarida and Georgina. It's truly been an honor and pleasure. So, thank you all for your support and everything you do. I also want to echo my colleague Rebecca's sentiment about Banner. It truly takes a village. And for everybody to show up with grace and support and collaboration through this transition. I know it has not been easy, and yet we're showing up in spaces trying to do what we can for the good of all of our students. Also, I want to thank all for supporting the Classified this week and who are serving a sweet treat to show them that they care and appreciate them. As trustee TJ stated, let's all show each other a little bit more care and be grateful that we work and we're a work for an amazing district and that we care and show up for each other. Thank you all for support and all you do.
Thank you. I would like to introduce, wait, Noah Aguilar, Associated Student President.
Hello, guys. My name is Noah Aguilar. I'm sorry, I didn't know how it worked. I am a biochemistry student here at Saddleback College. Before I start, I did want to thank you guys so much for all that you guys do. Just being here one year at Saddleback has been such an amazing experience. You know, the people I've met, professors, and the experiences that I've had just around campus. It's been absolutely wonderful, so I just wanted to echo that. I'm going to go quickly because I know I don't want to run out of time. As ASG prepares for our upcoming academic year, we are actively organizing our summer leadership bonding event. This event is aimed to strengthen collaboration and community within our team and serve as an opportunity to set the tone before our new academic year. We are also in the initial stages of planning and mapping out our All ASG Day, during which we will finalize the speakers and key information that will be presented to our officers. This event is currently scheduled for Friday, August 15th, and will help lay the foundation of expectations before we hit the ground running during Welcome Week. Additionally, we have begun the onboarding process for our newly appointed officers, many of whom who are entering student government for the very first time. And then lastly, earlier this month, ASG attended the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges Faculty and Leadership Institute, held in San Francisco. I had the privilege of attending alongside my fellow constituents, Nate Kalina, Anna Campos, and Adriana Maher. The conference gave us all incredibly valuable insights into participatory governance, student leadership, and equity-minded student advocacy, all of which will inform our many efforts moving forward. I look forward to an amazing year of working with you all, and I am very excited of what's to come. Great to meet you guys.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Maba Ahmed, Irvine Valley College Student Body President.
Hello. As you know, my name is Maba Ahmad, and I am a public health major at Irvine Valley College. I'm excited to serve with you all, a part of this board, and I'm really excited to see what we'll do together. I was here in the... In, I think, the presentation in April, we presented the budget presentation, and I had such a great time. And I'm so glad to be back here and see you guys in action. So, thank you so much for having me. The board updates that I have is currently... I've been attending amazing, amazing, amazing meetings the past two weeks, and I am amazed to see how our faculty and our staff at IVC is doing such a great job taking care of situations within IVC. Like the Banner situation, students are having a lot of trouble with that, and our faculty is doing a great job trying to take charge and address the situation. So, I'm just really excited to continue to work with everyone, but I will get on to my updates. So, currently, our executive board, we're working together to plan big events during the summer and address the situation. And we're working to support the undocumented and immigrant students within IVC. We're partnering with our Equity Center to see what we can do about the situation and release an official statement soon. We're also setting up plans for the rest of the year, like I've mentioned. And we've also planned our Student Leadership Rehearse Sheet in October, so where students will learn how to be true leaders and step up and be there for one another. And I'm really proud that the Board of Trustees is taking a moment to acknowledge the Pride Resolution as this is a good step to an equitable future for the students at Saddleback and IVC and just the faculty overall. So, I'm really proud of us of considering this resolution, and I'm excited to see what we do. Thank you so much for your time.
Perfect. One second left. Thank you very much, and welcome to our new people. Are there any board requests for reports? Okay, there's no public hearing, so we'll go on to trustee Prendergast with a resolution.
As was mentioned, we are doing Resolution Item 6.1, a resolution to recognize diverse communities and amplify the voices of those who have historically been silenced, including students and employees who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, and/or other gender identities, sexualities, and asexualities. Whereas Pride Month is celebrated each June to commemorate the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, a pivotal moment in the ongoing struggle for LGBTQIA+ civil rights a pivotal moment in the ongoing struggle for LGBTQIA+ civil rights and liberation. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees hereby proclaims June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, encouraging all members of the SOCCCD community to honor the past, uplift the present, and commit to a more inclusive and just future. I have a motion and second from the board.
So moved.
It is moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Milchiker to approve the resolution on Gay Pride. Let's vote, please. Oh, is there any discussion? Let's vote, please. Okay. On a seven to zero vote with advisory vote of yes from the student trustee, the motion carries. Okay. Next, we have number seven, Board of Trustees and the Chancellors. 7.1, Authorization of Payment to Trustee Absent from Board Member. Board meeting, sorry. So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded by trustee Bartlett to approve the payment to trustee absent from board member. Is there discussion? Board meeting, sorry. Is there discussion? Please vote. On a seven to zero vote with advisory vote of yes from the student trustee. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, on a seven to zero vote with the student trustee abstaining, the motion to authorize the payment of trustee absent from board meeting has passed. Okay, 7.2. This is Authorization of Payment to Trustee Absent from Board Meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Milchiker and seconded, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, by trustee Rydell to authorize the payment of trustee absent from a board meeting. Is there discussion? Okay, let's vote, please.
Yeah, actually, just for full transparency, it says hardship. Just for public knowledge, I don't consider having to chaperone 600 seniors at Disneyland a hardship, but it was work-related, so that's why.
Are you sure it wasn't a hardship?
There's aspects, but.
Supervision's hard. Thank you for being transparent. On a six to zero vote with one abstention and the student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion to authorize the payment of trustee absent from board member has passed. I keep saying that. Board meeting has passed. Thank you. Okay, 7.3 is Board Policy Revision, and this is for approval.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Jamal to approve the Board Policy Revision. Is there discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote with an advisory vote from the student trustee of yes, the vote to approve the Board Policy has passed. Okay, now we'll change gears a little bit. Number eight, the first presentation is for the district's strategic plan and facilities master plan update.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and introduce this one. I'm very excited to introduce Deb Chepley from Gensler, who helped to basically bring this Inspire 2035, our new strategic and facilities plan across the finish line. This has been a year-long journey for our colleges and district services. And as was mentioned, I'll quote Deanna Schurger, who said, "We do our best walk when we do it together." We had hundreds of people involved in the development of Inspire 2035. Students, lots of student voices were in this. Our classified professionals, our faculty, our administrators, our community at large. It was championed by a 40-plus-member group called the Chancellors Planning Commission. And at the end of the day, we were able to establish some driving principles and values. I think it's worth, you'll see it on the slides, but I think it's really worth articulating. Our values, community, equity, excellence, innovation, belonging, student centeredness, and empowerment were the driving kind of forces behind this. And the principles, again, of equity, belonging, and innovation are really threaded throughout. I was just thinking, you know, sometimes we take for granted our pledge of allegiance. We say it, you know, we've been reciting it since elementary school, and it's lovely. And I was trying to be present when I'm saying it, and I am. But today, it really hit me, you know, that we end with saying, "And justice for all." And honestly, that has also been a driving principle behind Inspire 2035. Because at the end of the day, I say it all the time, we have students who come from all walks of life at our colleges, almost 60,000 students, and they all deserve a chance to succeed and achieve their goals. And so you'll see that threaded throughout. And so with that said, I will go ahead and turn it over to Deb Chepley.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of our Gensler team, and I have to say it's been an absolute honor and pleasure to be collaborating with you all over this past year to develop this truly visionary and inspiring plan, so-called Inspire 2035. It is a result, as just mentioned, of a nine-month process that's happened over this entire academic calendar year. And it's truly a plan that is integrated. It's an integrated strategic and facilities plan, which is wonderful to show that tie. It's a participatory plan. There were so many voices, as mentioned, that were part of the process that you see in the words that were developed and the recommendations that come out of this plan. And it is truly data-informed, looking at qualitative and quantitative data to inform the planning conversations throughout. There's a document that's been prepared, and I'm not going through the entire document. I would like to share with you how it's organized. So this page is the table of contents. There's an introductory section and a letter from Chancellor Barnes introducing the plan, why it's important, and how it will be used. There's a whole chapter describing the planning process, what steps were followed, who was involved. There's a chapter of the summary of all the district-wide engagement that took place, all the different methods and the highlights that came out of that. And the third chapter is the framework, the most important part of this plan. It's the foundational elements that will guide the district through the next 10 years and form the basis for all recommendations moving forward. And then the fourth chapter, over on the right, you see the large purple box. That's the Integrated Facilities Plan as part of Inspire 2035. There's a chapter for each of your three campuses, as well as a chapter on the Implementation Plan. So going through a quick sort of highlight and summary of this, this is a page that describes the purpose. That Inspire 2035 will be the guide. A couple of highlights from the planning process, including a summary of all the different types of methods that were used to engage with the many, many voices across the district. And that included active workshops, open forums, online surveys, and several listening sessions with students. So there are multiple ways and opportunities for people to get involved in the planning process, to learn about it, and contribute their thoughts, ideas, and perspectives. As mentioned, there was a Chancellors Planning Commission, and this is the group we met with on a regular, monthly basis throughout the entire planning process. So this group really guided, served as the guide and the reviewer of information, and ultimately led the direction as it was developed and prepared and presented here tonight. So this group had 45 people included, and you can see the representation across the district from each of the colleges and from district services as well. All these names are on the plan, which are very important. They're all authors of Inspire 2035. A collaborative five-step planning process was used. This page describes the process, what happened during each step. It shows the process along the timeline across the calendar year that happened throughout, beginning, as I mentioned, in September and concluding here in June of 2025. From the District-Wide Engagement section, there's a lot of information here that share with you. You can hear more about the individual ideas, thoughts, perspectives. This is a summary page that highlights the engagement that took place. And this engagement was both internal and external. So it was district-wide at each of the colleges. And again, as I mentioned, it involved multiple methods. So people could be involved in person, or if they weren't available to be in person, they can provide their comments online. But also, the surveys were followed up with the listening sessions to make sure that all the voices were heard. Because we asked the question, even after we got all the surveys and forums, we said, "What voices are missing? Which ones do we need to make sure we're hearing?" And that's where the listening sessions were scheduled. So Chapter 3, Inspire 2035 Framework. This is the first page of that chapter. And this is a diagram that describes the five foundational elements that are part of the framework. There's some narrative that describes the purpose of this framework. But what's most important, I'd like to point out, is on the left, you see where we began, by understanding and articulating the district-wide values, the core beliefs that drive everything we do, the aspirational vision statement and the mission statement. The mission is a set of promises and commitments. Those three core elements on the left were then used to inform and to articulate a set of district-wide priorities and goals. Those are district-wide, that then informed a set of, are informing a set of college-level goals and tactics for Saddleback College and IVC, as well as for district services. And those priorities and goals are translated into a set of facilities' guiding principles to make sure it's very evident and clear that what's most important to you all as a district is evident in the design of your physical environments. So those guiding principles inform the campus level, planning, strategies, and projects. As mentioned, here are the values. And Chancellor Barnes mentioned these seven very important values. Each one has a statement to describe them in more detail. Your aspirational vision statement, empowering students, transforming lives, and strengthening communities through education. Oops. And a strong and very powerful mission statement. We place students at the heart of our mission, transforming their lives and nurturing creative thinkers that enhance the vitality of the communities we serve. Grounded in the principles of equity, belonging, and innovation, we ensure equitable access and foster outcomes that promote economic and social mobility. A lot of work went into wordsmithing that with 45 people, all making this a beautiful statement. And here are the district-wide priorities. These are the topics. This is most important, and this is emphasized in the plan. Focused about student-centeredness, equitable access, achieving equitable outcomes, advancing economic and social mobility of students, enhancing community vitality and engagement, and a focus on workplace culture and growth, creating an environment where, a safe environment where employees are valued, empowered, and respected. These priorities are translated into and inform a set of facilities' guiding principles. You see the five topics and the icons that are listed on the right side of the page. And then those five topics are here across the top of this page. These are the facilities' guiding principles and strategies to design your physical environments, to relate what's most important, focused on student success, building community, increasing access, improving efficiency, which also involves creating agile and flexible environments, and a focus and commitment to sustainability and stewardship of resources. The facilities plan, this is where there's three chapters. And this is the first chapter. For each college, there's a section that talks about the campus today and then the future campus. So this section is for IVC. And just a couple of pages from here, this illustrates the campus today with all of the existing buildings. And the orange indicating all the areas that are currently under construction, because you're making a lot of progress. A lot of things are moving forward based on the previous facilities master plan. And here is the IVC Facilities Plan for the Future, the 2035 Plan, which indicates existing buildings in white, proposed new construction in the navy blue, and buildings that will be renovated in orange. The renovations will include some change of use, and then you can see there's many, many site development projects here. Each of these projects is described in the plan with a little bit more detail. And then going on to Saddleback College, similarly designed, there's the existing campus today. On this plan, you see the existing buildings in the dark gray, the area under construction, your science and math building, and the temporary buildings are colored in a separate color, in the red. On the next page, you see the future plan. The temporary buildings are no longer there. The building under construction is completed, and we show additional buildings planned for new construction in the navy blue, as well as some major reconstructions and renovations in the orange, all tied together with a series of site development projects to describe the future campus. Inspire 2035 also includes an update to the ATAP Facilities Plan. It includes a history of the development of ATAP, including a series of development milestones from the previous plan and all of the wonderful development that's happened over the years. And a plan that highlights the current status of the campus with the IVC Idea Building, the Saddleback Auto Tech and Culinary Arts Building, and then all of the areas that are planned for lease development, the wonderful partnerships that you have in these relevant educational programs that will enhance and really enliven to make this a wonderful magnet for South Orange County Community College District. The fourth section of the facilities plan is the Implementation Plan. So this Implementation Plan is based on the projects that you've seen in the previous slides. It's a cash flow schedule, and this will be reviewed and updated annually to align with district facilities' planning processes. So that's an overview of the document, the document as in the electronic PDF. But in addition to the document, a comprehensive webpage is under development, has been developed to communicate this plan to both your internal and external communities. And it will be updated periodically to include additional detail as you're implementing the plan, and there's additional goals and tactics and metrics to include. But we'd like to give you a video preview of this website, and starting now.
At the South Orange County Community College District, we believe the future isn't something we wait for. It's something we shape. That's why we created Inspire 2035, a bold and visionary, comprehensive, strategic, and facilities plan that guides our work for the next decade and beyond. Inspire 2035 is more than a document. It's a living blueprint for student success, institutional excellence, and community transformation. It outlines our shared strategic priorities, key goals, and the path forward, centered around equity, innovation, and sustainability. Grounded in collaboration, Inspire 2035 was shaped by the voices of many: students, faculty, classified professionals, administrators, trustees, and community members.
I chose this college so that I can become the first woman to earn a degree in my family.
I'm here to help students improve their lives.
As a former student,
As a former student, I chose to give back to the college that helped my growth.
Through the Chancellor's Planning Commission and district-wide engagement, we listened, learned, and co-created a vision rooted in our collective values. Each pillar of Inspire 2035 is designed to move us forward, supporting students wherever they are in their journey, advancing workforce readiness and promoting inclusive excellence and ensuring the long-term vitality of our colleges in our region. We place students at the heart of our mission. Transforming their lives and nurturing creative thinkers that enhance the vitality of the communities we serve. Grounded in principles of equity, belonging, and innovation, we ensure equitable access and foster outcomes that promote economic and social mobility. Because what we do today echoes into tomorrow. Inspire 2035 ensures we stay focused on what matters most, helping every student succeed, thrive, and lead in a changing world. Together, we're building the future. Together, we are inspiring 2035. And that concludes the presentation. If there are any questions?
Are there questions? Very good.
No, but I'd like to say my hat's off to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I think we've seen some of this. Some of us a second time. But, you know, we're, I think, very supportive. And the map showing the differences in what the campuses will look like is impressive, I guess, but something we just need to be mindful of. You know, everything's constantly changing. So this is going to evolve as well. But good job.
Yeah, I think. Thank you.
I also think it was an excellent job. And I just want to say, I don't know if those buildings at Saddleback are temporary. Many of them have been here since 1968. They've been here a long time.
Depends on the definition of temporary. Well, it was, it's wonderful. Thank you for your work and thank you for your leadership. It's very inspiring. Okay. If there isn't any other discussion, we're going to move to 12.1, which is to approve of this plan. Is, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Jamal and seconded by Trustee Milchikor. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven-to-zero vote, with Student Trustee abstaining, the motion to approve the District Strategic Plan Inspire 2035 has passed. Yay, and thank you again. Okay, 8.2, another presentation. We'll move from missions to money.
So we have our Executive Director of Fiscal Services here, Connie Kavanaugh, who will be doing our budget presentation along with Devi Kekatrian and Elliot Stern going over their participatory governance related to the budget.
Right, I'll kick us off here. So tonight, we're here to present the tentative budget for the 25-26 fiscal year. It's hard to believe we're already there. So just as a reminder, the tentative budget is sort of our draft budget to get us started for the fiscal year that we need to have in place prior to July 1st in order to have authority to go ahead and issue disbursements and proceed with our operations. We will bring the adopted budget to the board in August. And that is our final budget that we utilize throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. And just as a reminder, June 30th is our fiscal year end. And so we will be rapidly closing our books during July. And the adopted budget will incorporate all those actual expenses through June 30th as our beginning balances. Just kind of a, I'm not going to go over every arrow here, but this is just depicting our budget process. It sort of kicks off in January when the governor first shares his proposed budget for the next fiscal year. And then we utilize that as we move through the budget process. We start with bringing budget guidelines to the board in January. We work with our DRAC Committee, or DRAC Council, I guess it is, to start looking at projections for the following year. That becomes fine-tuned as we progress through the year. The governor releases another budget in May, which is what we utilize now when we develop the tentative budget. So that's the best guess of funds that will be allocated from the state. During the course of the year, we work with KIC and DTC. The basic aid allocation is a huge part of our budget. So the DRAC Committee makes the recommendation to the board. In April, the board did adopt the recommended allocations of the basic aid funds for projects, for both capital projects and technology projects. And then moving through the arrows, we're here today to present the tentative budget once the state adopts, which, forgive me, I've been buried in banner. Not sure if the state actually signed a budget yet, but it's happening right about now. And that final budget will then, again, be incorporated in our adopted budget, which we will bring back to the board for approval in August. So I'm going to turn it over to Devi first. They're going to share a little bit about what happens, that same sort of cycle, and how it relates to the colleges and their cycle.
Thank you so much, Connie. So at Irvine Valley College, the process Connie just described that's taking place at the district-wide level, we have a parallel process. Essentially, every meeting where resources are discussed, whether it's DRAC, which is District Resource Allocation Committee, KIC, which is Capital Improvement Committee, or DTC, which is District-wide Technology Committee. All of that information is shared on a regular basis at the college, primarily the Budget Development and Resource Planning Committee. Also, college councils, when their major recommendations are being developed. So that happens in parallel at the college. So when committee members go back to the district-wide committees, we're well-informed. I do want to mention that the Budget Committee is comprised of faculty, classified professionals, administrators, and, as importantly, students. So their voices are heard, considered. And when the recommendation is made, it's reflective of that conversation with the constituency groups. We have a parallel process to that, which is the resource allocation process, which is what's depicted here. That process kicks off in mid-fall of, in this case, October of 2024 would have been the process that started for the allocation recommendations 25-26 fiscal year. So it does take a, almost like three-quarters of a year to develop those. When we make those recommendations, we look at revenue projections to make sure that we stay fiscally healthy, not only for the upcoming year, but for three years out. And then, in addition, we do a couple of major updates to the campus community during Flex Week presentations. I know some of the board members have attended those. So we do inform a broader campus community at least twice a year as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Stern.
Thank you, Devi. I'm Elliot Stern substituting for Vice President Garcia tonight. So our process is very similar to IVC's. We have two parallel processes that are going on at once. One is the overall budget development, which begins in fall and culminates about this time of year. And the other is for special requests. All of those things run up through two committees at the college. One is the College Resource Committee, and the other is our Consultation Council, which is our largest shared governance body. The resource side, that process for us begins in January, where individual originators of resource requests fill out a very complex spreadsheet with a very specific rubric in mind. That spreadsheet and all the resources requests on it are evaluated first by deans and directors, then ultimately scored by vice presidents. The scores are then aggregated. And that leaves us, in each of several major categories, requests in priority order. That request, those requests are first vetted through the College Resource Committee, ultimately through Consultation Council. So Consultation Council actually has its retreat on this coming Wednesday. And that's the time at which they will be evaluating those requests. Finally, they come to me and my team. And our job, if everybody else has done theirs right, is basically to draw cut lines in terms of what we can afford to identify those things above which we will fund and below which we will not fund. That's our process at Saddleback.
Shorty has to take over. Thank you, gentlemen. So just going back to our overall philosophy. So in general, the board's philosophy on budget has always been to ensure that we are wise and prudent using our public resources, that we promote financial strength and stability, and obviously, that we're maximizing educational opportunities for our students. So we keep that in mind during our process. These budget development guidelines were approved by the board back in January. Just to highlight some of the major components, the biggest sources of the funding would be basic aid. And then again, the area and college allocations, which is included in our DRAC model, which is our resource allocation process. And then, most importantly, we make sure that we have adequate reserves that we've built into the budget that align with our board policies. This next slide just depicts, at a very summary level by fund, our budget that's being presented to you tonight for approval. So the top line there in bold is our unrestricted general fund. That is what we really consider our operating budget, that we have the most flexibility to make decisions on the types of expenditures. We have a beginning balance in that fund of just over $111 million. We have projected revenues of $402.5 million, planned expenditures of $401.8, which leaves us with an ending balance of $111 million, $111.7 million. So those, again, represent the primary sources of our funding for the majority of our staffing and all of our general operating expenses. I'm not going to read through every line for you. The total of all the funds, if we look at the expenditures, which is really sort of the core of the budget, we're, you know, we're projected to spend just under $1 billion across all of the funds for the district. So the major assumptions that we used when developing the budget, on the revenue side, we use the student-centered funding formula calculation for the purposes of our DRAC model. So that takes into account our projected FTES. We follow the state formula and the calculations. So that includes a projected COLA of 2.3%. And we do get statutorily a growth authority for the growth in our student counts, our FTES, of 0.12%. Our growth has far exceeded that over the last couple of years. But we are limited to the actual funding we receive for growth based on the funds available at the state level. So this is the most conservative measure. If there are additional growth funds available, we will receive additional growth funding. But this is the sort of guaranteed level. So we've built that into the budget. We've projected our property tax revenues at a 4% increase. That's sort of our standard average over the last five years. So we're continuing to project at 4%. And of those property taxes, after we back out what we're funding through SCFF and other things, the money's available for the basic aid allocation, which goes towards our long-term fixed expenses, as well as our capital and technology projects, was $123.1 million. We are projecting lottery revenue at $5.3 million. And our Education Protection Act revenue is $2.7 million. And that is based on $100 per projected FTES. On the expenditure side, we have budgeted all existing positions and moving those for step and column, as well as the negotiated salary schedule increases. The PERS rate, for the first time in a long time, dropped for next year to 20, dropped to 26.8%. That seems like an oxymoron, but it did. And the STIRS rate stays at 19.1%. We've projected an 8% increase in health and welfare benefits. The good news is that actually came in lower. So our adopted budget will reflect that slight decrease from where we expected to be. The unemployment insurance rate stays at 0.05%. And we were projecting workers' comp at 1.14. I think that's gone up slightly. We got rates not timely enough to include them in the tentative budget. Our ending reserves for economic uncertainties in the tentative budget is $50.6 million. That's comprised of, we set aside 20% for the unrealized tax collections for property taxes. That's in our basic aid ending balance. So that was $20.4 million. During, a part of the DRAC calculation is 7.5% of our unrestricted revenue calculation. That's $20.5 million. And then both the District Services and College budgets incorporate a 3.5% reserve for economic uncertainties. And that totaled just under $9.7 million. So the sum of these meet the board policy, which requires us to ensure that we have set aside the equivalent of at least two months of operating expenses in our reserve for economic uncertainties. This just sort of pictorially demonstrates all of the funds we're allocating in the budget in the general areas. I'm not going to go through each number, but it shows you who's receiving the monies regardless of the source. So you can see Saddleback has the lion's share because they have the largest student population. IVC coming in second. And then District Services represents a smaller portion of that because we're really getting a fractional share of all the funds for the administrative supports of the district. This is a summary of the DRAC model calculations, excuse me, that are incorporated in the budget. I'm not going to go through each line. The largest portion of the DRAC allocation is the SCFF calculated funding. So again, that is distributed to the colleges proportionally based on their FTES. And then it also includes local revenues that are collected district-wide, state revenues that are collected district-wide unrestricted. Just to be clear, these are all unrestricted. And then those are proportionally distributed back out to the colleges, primarily on that same FTES split. There is one exception with ATUP. Now that we're collecting some tenant revenues, that those funds are distributed based on the CTE FTES by college because that location's basically for CTE-type support. And then District Services gets a proportional share of the college's allocations as well for the overhead. So the bottom line, the total funds distributed between the beginning balances or projecting ending balances from last year, which are the beginning balances and all the revenues collected, are depicted there on the green line below and represent $375.5 million. So the next steps, I forgive me. Hopefully, we have a state budget. Anne Marie will know, yes, no. So we're going to closely monitor that, whether it's passed or not. And once that's passed, we begin to incorporate those changes into our planned adopted budget. So we feverishly work in the month of July to ensure that we have all the most recent projected revenues and all of the related impacts on our expenditures for all of our health and welfare benefits, statutory benefits, et cetera. We are continuously monitoring our enrollment trends. We do project growth. But again, the SCFF calculation, because the state doesn't fully fund the growth, we, that's not, at this point, fully reflected. I know we've been communicating in various forms that there is plans perhaps to fund a larger percentage of growth at the state level, or perhaps even get to the place where they're fully funding growth. That would be a huge swing for us to, it's, the last we looked, it was between $15 and $16 million currently of unfunded growth we have in our SCFF calculation. So that would require us to make some pretty dramatic changes in how we're allocating basic aid funds for capital and technology projects going forward. But for this year, there's no plan to change for that. We don't yet know how much growth they'll fund and what that looks like. And then, of course, as I mentioned before, we are closing out last year. We have this special nuance this year of transitioning systems. So we have a heavy lift in my department. And I usually do this at the beginning. But at the end here, I just want to summarize and give a huge shout out to my entire Fiscal Services Department. We worked really hard on developing this budget. We had some, with the banner implementation, we had to do some things a different way. And we all worked through it. The colleges were great, too, and really working together to pull this together on time and accurately. So a lot of hard work went into this. And I just want to publicly thank everyone behind the scenes that aren't here tonight to just be thankful for their hard work and support. And that's it.
Questions? Are there any questions?
I have a question. So I just, some general questions about basic aid. I see the allocation here is $123 million on Slide number nine. Where is that reflected in Slide number eight on the overview? I'm assuming it's the unrestricted general fund, but I just want to make that clear, like revenues.
So yes, the revenue comes in. It is unrestricted funds, you're correct. And then it's transferred to the various programs. So for example, whatever is allocated for capital projects, that then is an expenditure in the general fund, transferred over to cap outlay. So the expenses might be in other funds, but the revenues collected are primarily property taxes. And those are all unrestricted general fund revenue.
Okay. And then one other question related to property tax revenue. And then, one other question related to property tax revenue. Is there any sort of geographic distribution where we can see where most of that is coming from? I'm just curious. I know there's a lot of more development in like the Irvine area versus maybe San Clemente, or is that just not information that the, you know, county gives you?
I should know this off the top of my head. I can look. We do get reports from the treasurer's office. I'm not sure if they summarize by the area. They likely do, so I could certainly look into getting that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's on the tax rolls, so they have the data somewhere, right?
It's not anything that they provide to us regularly, so it would kind of be a special request to try to get the breakdown by area?
I was just curious. It's not.
I can look if it's readily available. If it's not, yeah, that would be more difficult.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, trustee Jamal?
Interesting question. I've never, I haven't heard that asked, so it'd be interesting to see that data if we can get it. Just a question on property taxes and the trend. I assume we in the county, although there seems to be some upheaval in the county treasurer's office, that we see property values holding here, or do we see them continuing to increase?
Well, the majority of the-
That affects us.
Yes. And the majority of the tax changes come when the transfer of property happens, right? Because the, that's when we realize the increase in the value of the property. So those come through supplemental taxes the first year we receive the funds, and then they become part of the secured role. So I would say, I'd have to look back to the past year because we haven't obviously received all of our funds yet. Those have been larger buckets of money than we've seen in the past, which tells me that our property values are going up in general. I don't know if that's, the trajectory is going to continue at the same rate, but we can look at the historical supplemental taxes to get that information.
Okay. Trustee Bartlett?
Thank you, Madam President. So the treasurer tax collector can provide that information, and it's actually pretty interesting. You'd be surprised with the different pockets in Orange County where a lot of the revenue is coming from relative to property taxes. And, you know, there's a lot of Prop 13, so when you, that also, when you look at certain communities, it's kind of interesting, you see that overlay of those properties turning over because some of them have very low property taxes. So it's kind of interesting to see those results. I just want to thank Vice Chancellor Gable. Right before the meeting, we were rushing in because we wanted to, I wanted to go through a multitude of questions, and just want to thank you for answering all the questions before our meeting tonight. It's my first time through, you know, the strategic, or the tentative budget presentation. Lot of good information here, and it looks like we're on a really good trajectory for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Did I see trustee right now?
I had the question, you said that it's been 4% over the last several years. It seems like property taxes are so much more because of the housing increase, so have we thought about making it 5%? Predicting that?
So it fluctuates every year. Just to kind of give you an idea, between '21 and '21, '22, and '22, '23, total taxes increased 3.71%. And then the next year, between '22, '23, it was 7.86%. And then the next year, it was 4.81%. And the next year after that, it's 1.67. So I think that's kind of why we try to conservatively go with the 4%. Because, as you know, based upon our budget is how we allocate for basic aid. And so if we estimate our property taxes too high, then we're going to allocate too much towards basic aid. So we'd rather be conservative in our estimates on the property taxes. We always true it up and catch it up in the next fiscal year. So in any year where we are over or under on our estimation, that goes into the calculation for next year's basic aid allocation. So it's not like we never allocate it out, it just may be a year behind.
Anybody else? I have a question that kind of combines two of our trustees who have already spoken. Is the 4% that the average house, let's say, goes up 4%? Or, and/or, does it include places like Irvine, who adds 5,000 houses in a year, kind of thing?
It's both.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes, both.
Right. Because as trustee Bartlett said, with, with the transfer and, you know, with the ability to bring your property tax value with you, so say, you know, someone moves from out of the county into Orange County, if they're 55 and older, then they get to keep their old property tax base, and it doesn't go up to the amount that they paid for it. So there's a whole lot of things that go into how the property taxes are assessed, as we all know.
Okay.
Right, because ours can, you know, if it's not change of ownership, it's only a 1% increase. So it's really the, the majority of the money is coming through people selling their property, and then the increase in the assessed value. So that, that's unpredictable at best, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Then, can we have a motion to approve this?
It's moved.
Second? It's been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Bartlett that we approve the tentative budget present, tentative budget for 2025 to 2026. Let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee voting yes, the motion to approve the 2025-26 tentative budget has passed. Thank you. Okay, we are now to number nine with 21 consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
Ask for polls.
First, okay. Who has, does anybody rather have approved? Trustee Bartlett?
Item 9.15, please.
9.05. Okay, anything else? Any other?
I have, I have three. Be quick. 9.1, 9.11, 9.10, 9.11, and then 9.6. I guess that should have been first.
Okay, so that's 9.1, 9.10, 9.11, 9.15. Any others?
No, I-
No, no, no. 9.6, 9.10, 9.11.
Do you have one?
No, I'm not pulling any because I did have my questions answered earlier by Vice Chancellor Gable and by Vice Chancellor Viscount.
Great, thank you. Okay. Did I, I've got to check to make positive. 9.1, 9.6, 9.10, 11, 15. Did I get them all?
It's 9.10.
Yeah, you add, there is a 9.1 and a 9.10. I'm pulling 9.10.
Yeah, I got, I have that.
So not 9.1.
So not 9.1. I move the balance of the consent calendar.
I second that.
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Milchacher to approve, to pass the remaining part of the consent calendar. Can we vote, please? On a seven to zero vote with trustee advisory for student trustee of yes, the motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar has passed. Okay, now we would go to 9.6.
Yes, I just thought it would be good to shed sunlight on, on the relationship to the foundations, which I strongly support, and I already communicated with Vice Chancellor Gable and the chancellor on this, but could you let me know what, like what percentage of the foundations are supported by the district, their financial support, approximately?
So would you like that number net of scholarships or including scholarships?
Net.
Okay, so net of scholarships, then. It averages for Irvine Valley College between 73 and 80% of support from the colleges to the foundation. And then, for Saddleback College, net of scholarships averages anywhere between 34 and 60%. If you include, if you say that the district's support that includes the scholarships, then those percentages drop. So I'll just give you those numbers, too. So Irvine Valley College, their range is 52 to 56%, and Saddleback College ranges between 28 and 48%. So that is a calculation based upon their total expenditures for each of the last three fiscal years, and then kind of looking at what the, what the auditors call donated services, or the salaries and benefits of district employees that are paid for by the district. I will say that the colleges, every year, we do a commensurate return whereby the foundation is looking at all the services and offerings and support that the foundations make for the district. And in each of those last three years that we kind of looked at, both of the colleges far exceed the support to the colleges than the expenditures that are made by the colleges for the employee salaries and benefits.
Okay, thank you for that. And then 9.11. Oh, we're going to vote on each? I move 9.6.
Seven.
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Prendergast that we approve the master agreement between South Orange County Community College District and the Irvine Valley College Foundation, and the Saddleback College Foundation, and the foundation of the South Orange County Community College District. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with the student trustee advisory vote of yes, the motion to approve the master agreements between the district and all of the, all of the foundations has passed.
So 9.10 in that is the Saddleback College ATEP campaign, and I thought it'd be good to share with the public and board members what that campaign is about and what its goals are.
Thank you. Happy to avail myself of that opportunity. Many of you assume that we build it and they will come, but it actually does take some intentionality. In particular, the students who currently are in the auto tech and culinary programs on our campus would be driving a much more significant distance to get to ATEP. So the faculty have long said that we may lose some of those students, and that Elliott should expect a drop in enrollment. We're not ready for that, and we'd like to prevent that, so we are engaging in a significant campaign to attract new students, and of course, to maintain loyalty from our existing students as we move out to ATEP. The facilities also have the capacity to, for us to probably double the size of our existing programs, and we'd like to get ourselves on a trajectory in that direction. So the other hope of the campaign is not just to maintain our enrollment as we move out to Tustin, but actually to grow that enrollment. The campaign is a significant contract to a vendor that is comprehensive in nature. It includes everything from the initial marketing plan to creating the ads and graphics to actually doing the media buys. Most of our campaigns, as this one will be, are on social media, but this one also includes cable ads and bus ads. We have a couple of ads that we can share with folks who are interested. We just need to give you access to the shared document on which the videos sit, but they're very energetic and very exciting, and we're very happy about the campaign. We will not know results probably for several weeks, if not more, because the campaign is just launching in earnest. This marketing campaign, like all others, provides through a QR code and a URL, a unique URL, and that way, we're able to track how effective the campaign is in bringing new students, because the students are going to a specific subpart of our website as opposed to the landing page for our college. Any other questions, trustee Jamal?
Oh, some of, I mean, I think sharing it with board members would be wonderful, and some of us who are active on social media can repost and, and share and collaborate.
We can do that.
Yeah. Okay, and I move the item.
Second? It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Bartlett that we approve the purchase orders, checks, and dispersments 9.10. All in favor?
Oh, okay. Aye.
Well, no, we have to. Here we go. On a seven to zero vote with student trustee advisory vote of yes, the item to purchase of purchase orders, checks, and dispersments 9.10 passes.
So in, sorry, 9.11, our effort and expenditure resource to recruit internationally Chinese students, can you talk about the metrics and KPIs of that work so far? Anne Marie. I guess I'm directing, Anne Marie.
So we've made a, or the colleges have made a concerted effort, really since the pandemic, to really try to bring back our international student population. So as you know, the FTES in that non-resident area really did kind of tank more so than even our resident students during the pandemic, and so they have made the concerted effort to contract with these recruiting agencies in the various countries, not just China. Although with China, it is a, the largest population of all of our international students. So for Saddleback, 55% of the spring 25 students came from China, and for IVC, it was about just under 54% of the students came from China. You know, we, we have targeted the areas, the recruiting firms only get paid when and if they send someone to us, and those students have to take at least 12 units. So we're not paying them unless we actually see the enrollment of the students and that the students stay for at least a semester, but primarily for the year on that. Does that answer all your questions, or do you want more details?
No, most of them. You sent me information by email, I appreciate that. I think if other board members want it, they can get it from the chancellor, from you. So I move the item.
Second?
It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Milchacher.
Okay.
Moved by, moved by trustee Jamal, seconded by trustee Bartlett, that we approve 9.11 contracts. Is there any other discussion? Can you vote, please? On a seven to zero vote, with student advisory trustee abstaining, the vote of 9.11 contracts has passed. 9.15?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is the item to either donate or dispose, or sell some of the surplus property. And I think with the exception of the eight vehicles, which makes sense to sell, those are, you know, higher dollar values, the other items are, I'm going to say nominal, but pretty nominal in value collectively. And I'd like to have the board give a directive to the department head, who's in charge, the executive director of procurement, central services, and risk management, to maybe sell the vehicle, the eight vehicles, but for the other items, put the word out to some of the nonprofits in the area. We have a lot of local nonprofits that can probably use some of these items. So that would, that would be my, my motion.
Okay, is there a second? Is that?
It's a good idea, but I don't think we have the authority to do that.
Yeah.
Well, if you're disposing, you're essentially donating, so I think that's one of the options here. It is to set, sale, approves the sale or disposal of surplus property, which means disposal, I'm assuming would mean to give it away.
So we probably want to take a look at our, kind of our policies and guidelines around that, to be sure that the board can take action in that manner?
Yeah, when we say disposal, it's typically throw it away, or, but we really do try to sell everything, and you would be amazed at the things that we can sell. So we put everything up on auction, and we will put it in pallets, and someone will come in and bid on the pallets of things. We sell most everything unless they're really, really junked. And, you know, when that's the case, then they do end up being thrown away.
Okay, perhaps then we could put everything out for auction, and then what doesn't sell, rather than throw it away, offer it to nonprofits at that point, just so it doesn't go in the dumpster.
Yeah, we can look at the code and make sure how that works. I know we have donated items, it's in the past, but it's been a very unique situation, so we would, we'll definitely look into that.
Okay, yeah, I'd just hate to throw something out in a dumpster when somebody perhaps could use it out there.
Okay. Good idea. Is there any other discussion of that item?
No.
Okay.
Move the item.
Can we, is, do we have a second? Second? Second. It's been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Rydel, that we vote on the decli, miscellaneous furniture, equipment, and supplies as surplus. Let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote, the student trustee voting an advisory vote of yes, the motion to declare miscellaneous furniture, equipment, and supplies as surplus has been passed. Okay. I believe we're now up to number 10. Number 10.1, five-year construction plan, initial project proposals, and final project proposals. Is, I'm thinking, there's, it's not a, okay, I'm thinking there was going to be a report. I think I'm.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry. Who said that?
I moved it.
Okay. It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Dack that we pass the five-year construction plan, initial project proposal, and final project proposals. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. On a seven to zero vote with a advisory vote by the student trustee, the 10.1, five-year construction plan, initial project proposals, and final project proposals has passed. The approval of addendum number five.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
It was a long one.
I know, thanks. Sorry. It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Rydel that we approve the addendum number five for INSPIRE 2035 to the environmental impact report for 2011 facilities plan for both Saddleback College and Irvine College, Valley College pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. On a seven to zero vote with an advisory yes vote from the student trustee, the motion to approve addendum number five for the INSPIRE 2035 to the environmental impact report to the 2011 facilities master plan for both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act has passed. 10.3. It has been moved by trustee Prendergast. No?
No, I have a question.
Oh, okay. And seconded by trustee Dack that we pass the award of beverage sales and sponsorship agreement PepsiCo Beverage Sales LLC. Question, Mr. Jamal?
So I think she knows it's coming. So Vice Chancellor Gable, I was disappointed that we only received one bid, and I don't like Pepsi, but, but no, the main issue is we only received one, we only received one bid. So do you want to explain how that happened because it's not an insignificant contract?
Right. Yeah, unfortunately, we did only receive one bid because I am not a fan of the one that bid on it either, so, but.
Some Pepsi some love.
Go ahead. I would say that the environment with which we are living in today is vastly different from what it used to be 10 years ago, whereby the vendors that serve beverages and the pouring rights vendors, they used to throw all kinds of money at the community colleges to be on their campus and to have exclusivity. Those days are long gone, whereby Coca-Cola, the reason that they didn't bid is because they didn't want to provide any funding to the colleges at all, whereas as you see in this contract, you know, Pepsi is guaranteeing $220,000 in cash contributions to the two colleges over the five-year period, plus they're going to provide commissions on the vending, plus there's going to be rebates, you know, so there's a lot of funding that's going to be coming back to the colleges with Pepsi to have the exclusivity, whereas Coca-Cola, one, they wouldn't provide any contributions to the colleges, and they also indicated that they felt that they wouldn't be able to service us appropriately. The other one that a lot of times you'll typically see bidding is Dr. Pepper, and it's kind of the same, the same thing with them. This is not uncommon. I reached out to several of my colleagues throughout the state and of the three districts that have recently done a pouring rights, or pouring rights RFP like we did, they got the same result. Pepsi was the only one that would bid on their contracts. So although I don't like only getting the one proposal, it is the only one, and it's not uncommon really in this day and age to see only one.
Seems like an industry ripe for some competition at some point.
I know. I was really hoping Coke was going to come through, but.
Are we allowed to use Royal Canadian, or is it because they're out of the country?
I switched to Pepsi. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so we did have a motion, right? Okay, let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote with an advisory vote from student trustee of yes, unanimous vote for award of beverage sales and sponsorship agreements to Pepsi. This is educational services agreement with Kid Create Studio, amendment number two.
Move the item.
Is there a second? Moved by trustee Bartlett, seconded by trustee Dack. Is there any discussion? Okay, vote, please. On a seven to zero unanimous vote with student advisory voting yes, we have passed the SOCCCD Educational Services Agreement with Kid Create Studio, amendment number two. We now go on to human resources. Vice Chancellor Viscatill?
Yes, no changes, but we do have one contract tonight, so I'd like to read out the contents of the contract. It is for the position of director, extended opportunity programs and services, known as the O P N S. The employee name is Dr. Jasmine Marie Torres, contract date June 9th, 2025 through June 30, 2027, range in steps 17, 4, annual salary 175, 152. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Rydel, I believe. Yes. Is there any discussion?
Is this the academic personnel? Is that what this is? Okay, well, I do have a comment, okay?
Okay.
Well, I want to say that I did, when I name the people I named that are retiring, because I like to highlight them, I always ask for approval afterwards from Vice Chancellor Viscatill to make sure that it's okay to mention those names. So I want to thank her for that and thank her for answering my question about item 11.3 also. But the people I want to mention are John Beatty, the assistant director at Irvine Valley College, of IT at Irvine Valley College. He served our district for 31 years. He started as a classified employee and moved on to become an academic one, and thank him for his 31 years of service. And this was mentioned prior to this, Simon Davies, who's a kinesiology instructor at IVC for 20 years and nine months, and also a soccer coach. So thank these people for their service to our colleges and wish them a happy retirement.
Do we have a motion? I don't, we didn't get the motion yet, right?
No.
Okay.
We did.
We did. It's right there. I see it. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. On a seven to zero vote, 11.1, academic employees and management personnel actions, ratifications, regular items, has passed. 11.2?
No changes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Dack for 11.2, classified personnel actions and ratifications. Any discussion? Let's vote. On a seven to zero vote, unanimously, we have passed classified personnel actions, ratifications. Are there changes?
No. No changes.
Move the item.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Rydel for the demand to bargain between the district and the SOCCCD Faculty Association. Is there discussion?
This is not an action item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it has to be sunshine, essentially, to board meetings, this board meeting, and in July.
Okay, thank you. So we just know that it's there.
Correct. No action information only for this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've done 12.1, and then 13 is information items. We have the facilities plan status report, 13.1. And that is an information item. And then 13.2 is monthly financial status report. Okay, here we go. It's missing it. Okay, we now have reports. A, the chancellor.
I just need 20 minutes. Just kidding. All right, I know it's been a long night. One thing I did want to mention, just as a follow-up to INSPIRE 2035, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this, our public affairs department led by Dr. Letitia Clark was really instrumental in the work that we did with INSPIRE 2035. The logo that you see, the heart-shaped pins, students at the heart of our mission, the fantastic website, I know we didn't go over it today, but please do look at the website. It's going to be updated along the way, the video, and also the brochure. The board members will each receive brochures that you could leave with members of the public as well if you would like. So this was all championed by our public affairs unit with Letitia, Holly, and Scott, so I did want to make mention of that. And the other thing I want to say, I, you know, I think any organization, any institution, any relationship in general has its trials and tribulations, and we're no exception. We heard a couple of comments here about Banner. Obviously, we spent quite a bit of time with public comment, and I want to say that I still remain very proud of our colleges and our district, which includes all of you, including our board members, which lead with heart, but also integrity and a strong moral compass. And I think we always emerge on the other side, doing the right thing on behalf of our students and on behalf of our mission, and I know we will continue to do that. And that's why our colleges are great and they are ranked so highly in the state and the nation. So I'm very optimistic. I think INSPIRE 2035 is going to be an awesome roadmap that will also get us there again. So you couple that roadmap with the, our values and our integrity, I think we're going to be in a really great, continue to be in a great space. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. College. Oh, right. The president, Irvine Valley College?
Thank you, trustee Inman. I wanted to share a new program that are, the IVC MESA program is piloting this summer. It is an eight-week research experience that they've called Summer Spark, STEM Projects Advancing Research and Knowledge. We have currently 12 students participating in this summer research experience. Those students will receive after completion a $5,000 stipend. What's wonderful is that it is a collaborative faculty-mentored research or industry-relevant challenges, and it's for many of our students. You know, MESA is low-income first-generation students. It will be the first time that they will experience hands-on research experience while being mentored by a faculty member. They are working on projects such as seven robotic systems with various AI applications. Trustee Milchiker will be happy to hear that five of the robotic systems are Mars rover-style applications, and two are standard four-wheel robotic rovers, two weather stations with AI predictive software, and then a NASA open-vehicle sketchpad that will be used for ground school for aircraft and wing design, and there are others. You know, the students will also be able to demonstrate during flex week with a research poster session to show what they have learned and the results of their research. And why now? Well, we know federal funding for undergraduate research through funded grants have either been eliminated or in jeopardy of being eliminated. We know that many of our community college students who are particularly MESA students with their demographics face systemic barriers to research exposure and faculty mentoring, and it's an incredible opportunity to strengthen their STEM identity and belonging. And then equally important, it will help students gain self-confidence in their academic and professional within STEM spaces. I want to thank physics professor Alex Sim, who is mentoring 11 of the 12 students, and chemistry professor Stephen Wen, who is mentoring the remaining 12 or one student. It's a pilot. We hope it's successful. I believe it will be, and we'd love to see some element of this with, if we can secure external funding as a year-round project, then we'll keep you updated. That concludes my report.
Thank you. President of Saddleback College?
Thank you, President Inman. I want to echo Christian Suazo's thanks of support for our ongoing trips to China. We do fund that trip, but only the visa cost, the $400 visa cost for low-income students. Everything else is being paid for by the Chinese Cultural Ministry, and that continues to be the case. So we hope those trips continue for a long time. The students who come back, the most common thing that is said is that that was life-changing for them. And remember that many of these students have never been beyond California, let alone into another continent. I also want to thank you for tonight's resolution in support of Pride Month. At a time like this, when we find many elected officials around the country and around the world, if not backwalking, support of LGBTQ rights, actually turning LGBTQ individuals into the new Willie Hortons, it is important that we show our LGBTQ students and employees, and 10% of our students identify as LGBTQIA, that we support them, and that when they are feeling afraid, we hug them even tighter. So thank you very much for the resolution. I think it's an important symbol. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor McDonald?
I want to give a brief update on Banner. I'll speak deliberately in casual terms. Banner is what I would call the 95-5 problem. So as of now, we have 23,000 students that have registered successfully, and their enrolled in course enrollments were almost at 67,000. The 95-5 problems mean that about 5% of students might have a bump or a hiccup, so you're talking thousands of calls. What I'll say is we are on time, on budget, but we couldn't have gotten this far without what I call locally our power users. So there's about 150 people that work behind the scenes, where this is the most stressful time in their entire career, and they're pulling it together, and we're getting it done. So we made a promise we'd be on time, on budget. We made a promise that if students could register, which they can, and if we can pay folks, which HR and finance, they go live next week, so they're under a tremendous amount of stress over the next few weeks, that we would do it. I'll just add that we're the first multi-college district to pull it off. We were number five. Everyone else stalled. We did not stall. We're getting it done. But it's really kudos to a lot of the people in this room and a lot of our power users who, you know, we're working night and day. Our issues, some of it is the technology, but to be fair, our policies and procedures have not caught up to the change. So we're doing a lot of manual work, trying to get things done. Very few surprises. It's about as hard as we expected, but I'll just say that if anyone could have done it, any district, it would have been our district. And, you know, I'm proud of where we are, and we'll get it done, and we'll make the improvements as promised. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Tremendous amount of. Tremendous amount of work, as everyone knows. Dr. Visca-Chill?
Yeah, just briefly on the HR side, banner-related. Danielle Heimbach, my district director is in the back, her and Kavai Tenio on my staff, and then Vice Chancellor Gable has the director of payroll, Connie Ramos. They've been working tirelessly for, over the last year, but I want to just commend all of them to make sure that when we hit the go-live date, that people are paid correctly, which is a big deal. And I honestly haven't seen a group under more stress than trying to do their jobs and implement banners. So, again, to Chris, his staff, kudos to those folks that came together. This was a very challenging circumstance, and they deserve our praise.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Gable?
So, Cindy kind of took my thunder there, but I guess this is the night of thank-yous to all of our supporting staff. I have Connie Kavanaugh, who you saw did the tentative budget. She's leading the fiscal banner implementation, along with Jackie Hahn and Alicia Cuevas. Under her, they're doing not only, I would say, one implementation, they're doing four implementations, because we have all these plugins. So, we have a system for budget. We have a different system for employer reimbursements. We have a different system for purchasing and requisitions. And on the purchasing and requisition side, the heavy lift came from Priya Jerome and Nick Newkirk, who is here in the audience. So, it is really a huge implementation. They have put their blood, sweat, and tears, and many, many, many tears, I would say, into this implementation. And next week is our go-live for, as has been mentioned, primarily for the fiscal side, purchasing is already live. So, we're all crossing our fingers that it goes as smoothly as it did for students. I think it will, because all the work that's been in there. And then not to leave Menhany out, and Mary Opal, you know, they've done a fantastic job on the facility side. So, you saw, you know, the culmination of their efforts with the EIR, with the facilities plan that is part of INSPIRE 2035, as well as the five-year plan, and the FPPs and IPPs. So, thank you to everybody who supports us.
Thank you very much. This is an example of, we just simply have the best employees. That's, that's all. Thank you. Yes. We're going to adjourn and go back to closed session, but at the end of that, there will not be a report. Thank you very much.